Adding the changes that the governor made in his executive order. Like I said, the one in your packet has no changes other than the date. The one I just gave you has the changes that the governor has made, which in his executive order, he opens up retail to go. That's the only one that would really impact in Skerry County. His order, the different things that he listed in his order. Retail to go would be the only thing that would change here. And there is a certain way that that was done, and there are guidelines by the DSHS that have been provided. So it's employers, employees, and customers. All employees are trained. All employees are trained on environmental cleaning and disinfecting hand hygiene. They must be screened before going to work. They must wash or sanitize their hands for going into work. Must wear face coverings. Must maintain at least six feet, six feet separation. And then you can only pick up, deliver, or delivery by mail, or delivery to doorstep. They can't go into the customer's house. All payments are over the phone. That type of thing, or over the internet. That's the state's requirement. So if we get rid of our orders, we have to follow the state's orders. We can make other changes to our orders. I've been talking to local health authority, and I've been talking to other leaders in the community, the city, the hospital, the college, the schools. And they all feel like we should follow the course that we've been following, at least for the next two weeks. I know it's a difficult path that we have been following, but that's kind of the recommendation we're getting right now. If we were to just get rid of ours and follow the states, we have some in our orders that we're allowing to stay open that the state doesn't. So the clothing stores would be a good example of that. They would have to close and do retail to go only. Right now, they're able to allow customers to come in. So any thoughts on all that? I know YouTube like to speak. So Ms. Jameson? Yes, ma'am, you're fine right there. You can sit if you like.
Hello, my name is Sarah Jameson, and I wish to represent the small businesses of Snyder. Please understand, I may not represent every view, but I feel that we need to have some of the voice in this discussion. I first want to say thank you, Judge, for allowing more leeway to see on things than other places have been. I appreciate that. And I know small businesses do too. I am here to voice a concern. I do not feel a decision should solely be based on one side of things. While it is extremely important to receive advisement from the medical side, I also believe we should have other input in this decision. Let me share my side, please, as a business owner. I have noticed that the people who scream the loudest and saying, please stay home, we need, we need to remain shut down, and we need to be safe, are also the ones that are receiving a continuous paycheck while remaining at home. We have business owners that are struggling to make ends meet because they can, they are not receiving any money. Some of them are having to use own personal money, if they have any, to pay for their business bills. I do find it interesting, when the county or the city creates their budget, they rely upon these business owners' incomes to fund their budget. But such a time as this, it seems their opinion is not needed. Our small businesses of Snyder are the financial backbone to this community. Our business owners are saying, let us open. Give us guidelines to follow like Walmart and United, and let us get back to work. We cannot sit by the wayside and wait for some, something to happen. This would be the same thing as me saying, I better not leave my house today because I just might be hit by a drunk driver. We cannot live like this. If you, as a judge, trust our business owners to operate and run a successful business on a day-to-day basis, then you should, should you not trust them in doing their research and making wise decisions for opening their business concerning this COVID-19? Yesterday, we all received devastating news concerning the oil field. You and I both know that if we continue to remain closed, we will have an economic collapse. We must be allowed to get back to work and try to salvage what we can. I am asking that you put yourself in these business ownership interpretation of essential businesses can be different than mine. If I own a salon, a tattoo shop, or anything along those lines, and I am a single parent trying to feed my family, then to me, my business is essential. Since we do not, since when do we have government officials decide what business is essential or not? I am sure that they are all essential when you are preparing your budget for the county. We cannot make a one-sided decision without considering your facts. Medical niche issues are not the only side. I understand that people get sick, and I understand that people die from this, but we are losing people every day to cancer, heart attack, and the flu. When do we place more value on the loss of life due to COVID-19 than we do with these other losses? My point is, we cannot shut down the economy forever. We will always have loss. Please be different and take this in consideration, the livelihoods of our community members. They do not want to lose their businesses and everything they invested into. Right now, we have people that are getting their stimulus checks, and I can only assume that major retailer Walmart is probably getting the majority of those. How much better would it be if these smaller businesses could reopen and receive some of that income to recoup their losses? Judge, we've been patient, and we've been compliant. I would like to ask that you do not institute another thirty days, but take one week at a time in reopening our small businesses so we can have a fighting chance. I'm aware that Governor Abbott is into money steps to reopen the small businesses, and I think we should follow as soon as possible, soon as possible. Let's make Snyder strong. Let us Americans have our God-given freedom to get back to work and move forward. This is the land of the free, the home of the brave, and please do not take our rights away just to be safe.
Thank you, Ms. Jameson. Sure.
My auto shop is open, and I am grateful for that. I am speaking for the business owners that are not here, not all of them.
Okay, that's fine, that's, that's fine. I just, I was trying to figure out why you were closed down. I don't like the others either.
Do what?
I said, I don't like the other businesses being closed.
I don't either.
It's, I, I agree with that. I don't like it either, because I feel like, and I've said before, that every business here is essential. And it's not because of tax reasons. It's not. That's not my, my thinking on this, because we need these small businesses to survive even in good times. So when we, when I put this in, in place, it was looking at everything that's going on from local, state, federal, and worldwide. Seeing how devastating it has been throughout the world. And the reason is, is the reason it's so devastating is there's no cure, there's no vaccine, it's just, there's nothing there. It's not like the flu. And it's a whole lot more contagious than the flu. You're, you can see places like Lubbock, where they're, they went from zero cases to a whole lot of cases in no time at all. And so I believe you, and I, I agree that business owners are responsible, and they, they are going to take care of as much as they can. But I also go to, and look at some of, just go sit in the parking lot and look at some of the retailers that are open, and you'll see entire families going in when all the way, the whole medical community world separate. Don't bring your whole families in there, just take one, just one person go in. We're trying to, but we were, allow, like you said, we're, we were as loose as we could be. I don't want to get to where we're a police state. I have never wanted that. And I know it's, it's pushing it right now. I don't like it. But if we do that, we are definitely a police state. If we start manning, manning every entrance to every place and putting deputies and troopers at the border, or at the counties, and telling people you can't come in, or you can't go out unless you have a note, that was the first thing that came out. Do I need a note for my business? No, we weren't going to go that far. We were. I understand that. Like I said, if we follow along with the states, some of the retailers that we've allowed to open will close. And I don't, I don't want to go that way. I would rather we go with a slow opening and allow some of these retailers to open back up to an extent. So I'm hearing a lot about barbers and beauty shops and tattoo parlors and nail salons and stuff like that. That is direct person-to-person contact. I don't think we're there yet. I think that if we give it a little more time, we will be. We haven't hit that peak here in Texas yet that everybody talks about. If you look at states like New York and Michigan, where they have had massive cases, and California has had a pretty good amount too, but they've had massive cases, and they have lots of deaths. Well, it, I don't know how far we go with it. I don't think, I think if we give it just a little more time, slow opening, I, I think we'll get there. I think that, because if, if we keep people to where they limit their contact with people, they're not going to pay, if they, if they have it, if they're asymptomatic, and they have it, they're not going to pass it on to someone else if they, if they social distance and do the things that they're supposed to do. So, and that's based on all the medical information out there. And I know we are in a bad situation with the way the oil has gone. That situation started before the COVID did. And that's gonna, us opening up is not going to fix that situation. Those people are still not going to go to work, because that is supply and demand worldwide that has shut that down. Absolutely, yeah. And I've got no problem with them opening up to an extent. So Dan, did you have some comments? Go for it, man.
Well, thank you for the opportunity, first and foremost. I am here today to say that I do not feel that we should have a thirty-day extension. I wrote on the bottom of that piece of paper there that it says, are you for or against the issue?
Right.
I am against a thirty-day extension. Mainly because, just like you said, we need to be able to slowly open and do some things, retire our hands to the thirty-day deal. That's, that's a pretty long time. We have to keep in mind that we're only thirty days into this whole deal, and it seems like six months. So to sit here today and extend it by another thirty days will have a devastating impact, not only financially, not only all these things, but the mental psyche of the people that live in this town will be crushed if you tell them we're going to go at least thirty more days. And I do not hear that being addressed. I hear the medical community making their statements. I totally understand. From their standpoint, the main thing is to stop this. The truth of the matter, in my opinion, is we're not going to stop this. We can slow it, we can do some things, but we are not going to stop this. We cannot seal ourselves in our houses and protect ourselves from anything that might get us. I made this analogy. In Skerry County, you're more likely today to come in contact with a rattlesnake than you are the COVID. I'm definitely afraid of rattlesnakes, but I can't live in my house because of it. So with that being said, I think we should take a little easier approach. I'm not sure that we shouldn't extend the stay-at-home order that you have in place. I don't know what your plan is to start the soft reopen. If you have a plan for that in place, I would love to hear that plan. If we don't have that plan in place, maybe we extend this a week. And during this week, we get that plan in place. I really feel that putting that plan in place has got to include some input from not only the government entities, and I'm sorry, but the hospital is part of that. But also some different entities in employers, the self-employed, the extremely small businesses that are one person. And that, that input needs to be part of that decision. So far, and I may have missed something, but what I have seen mainly on the afternoon briefings is is the medical side. I haven't seen any of the business side, or for that fact, for that matter, even someone about the mental health side of the impact of this. So my position today, and what I'm asking you to do, is either, one, lay out the reopening, or, two, extend this by one week. And during that week, spend that week drawing information from several different people. And at the end of that week, be able to lay out the opening. Please don't, don't extend this for thirty days. It would, it would just be devastating to people to extend it thirty days. All of us like, and we go and we get advice from people on, on many, many things. The hardest thing to do is go get advice from somebody who you know disagrees with you. That's the hardest advice you can see. But in a time like this, I think it's important for our leaders to go get that advice and put that into their thinking.
Thank you, Dan. So I'm going to tell you, I don't disagree at all. We just need to be cautious about it. I don't want to do thirty days. That's, it, if you looked in here, you could see that I said till May 5th, that's two weeks. Can we split the difference? Would you be agreeable to two weeks? If we do the retail go, allow people to open up again? I'm, I'm asking your opinion on that.
My opinion is it should be on a week-for-week basis right now. Based off of this, this is my.
Sure.
Okay, so this thing has changed tremendously. The first day that this kind of hit us there, some, I mean, really started hitting us sometime the first of March. I mean, we were told it was going to sweep across us. I mean, sweep across us, huge numbers. Now, thirty days later, twenty-five days, whatever it is, well, we haven't seen that huge sweep. There's been some terrible areas, but we haven't seen this, this massive wave. Secondly, one thing that bothers me is this right here. The first week, I was trying to clean the gin. I had employees and I, and we couldn't buy a dust mask because to clean that old nasty gin. And the authorities, some in this room, some not, were saying, give us your mask so we can take them to the hospital. It won't do you any good anyway. And that was stated. It won't do you any good.
That was, that was coming down from the feds too.
It comes straight from the feds. I agree. I'm not, but now those same people.
Yeah, are saying, wear a mask.
Are saying, wear a mask. And my point of that is not to call anybody out. The reason I say a week is it evolves a lot every seven days. And even the glimmer of hope that we are only seven days away will make a huge difference in the attitude of the citizens.
You know, something that I, I got a, a drawing the other day, or, or a graphic the other day that said, we are at that point. We're at the breakover point. It's going to go this way, or it's going to go this way. Either, having put this in place, and we did this early to protect ourselves, so that we didn't end up like some of those communities that did get, well, there's one community that's got over a hundred cases. They're the same size as us. So we didn't end up like that. And in this graphic, it shows where it's a leveling off, where we're at the point, right before that, either we continue where we don't have any cases, or we let up and the case number shoots up. So, and that's the big concern from the medical community. I know you're tired of hearing about the medical community. But that's, that's the big concern, is that if we let up too much all at once, we're going to end up with those high numbers of cases. And we'll start having some of those deaths. I don't want to lose a single person. I don't want to lose a single business in this community, and I'm afraid that, you know, it, you know, that rock and hard place, which way do you go? You got to tread a fine line. You know, they've closed the schools for the rest of the year until the fall. And that's, that's to protect against that big explosion of cases. So Well, there's, there's something that's, there are some things that are coming up in the following week that could really be a game changer as far as what's going to happen. And I will put that information out as soon as I can. I'm still trying to get information put together. And it started a week. I need more information to be able to put this information out. So one week is when this starts, and then just a few days later, if we, so it, if we meet on Tuesday, and several days later, we start having, we, we loosen things up again, and we have a whole volley of cases in the next few days, we could have to go right back to start again. And we don't want to do that. So I don't want to do thirty days. I'm not looking at thirty days. I'm looking at two weeks. That's all I'm looking at. But opening up, like the governor suggested, in certain areas that will allow some of these small businesses to, to get back to work and to get some of those dollars that you were talking about. But I'm not the only one making the decision here. You'd like to see what?
I'd like to see the darn thing open up. And people go back to doing what God, your strategy. And I think he's in charge from the beginning here. You know, one or two times, a good governor down here. But what we running to here, it bothers me, I think that could be fixed all right, is we sit here and, and do something today, and then the governor comes out late this evening and, and does something else. You know, where do you act then? Well, first, after you're, you're at two weeks waiting to come back, unless you call a specialty, to get that done. I don't see why in the world, I don't see why in the world that where she said her garage was open. But most folks hadn't got, unless you go to Walmart or somewhere like that, at the grocery store, they hadn't, I think they probably got more people working than anybody here in town. I was out at Kinnamarkin the other day, and one thing that's bad about this deal, nobody stopped, this is the way it is. I had to go out there and see about a slot in the road. But I went down there and got the mine. We've gotten separate vehicles. My mom went out like that, and I didn't get mine. Young city, huh? I never, we'd been at something right now. I can remember my daddy saying, hey, boy, it means that he's hanging out for you. Shake it. So it's hard to get rid of something like that, and I'm afraid we're going to get rid of that kind of a deal. But anyway, you know, when you wait two more weeks to have a meeting, I think we ought to, you know, if you want a week, and she's, and, 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 and he's willing to wait one week, fine. But the maybe deal is exhausted, as far as I'm concerned. Need to do it, or we don't, and, and I think everybody I've seen around, they've kept their six-foot in an all. Now, I don't think they're having that grocery store, I don't think they're with. And I haven't been in there. I've just been told. There are a lot of folks in there. I can't get that deal. But anyway, I think that, I think that's the decision, right? It, it needs to be made one way or the other.
To just open it up or not?
I don't know what you call it, open it up or not. I don't know what not means.
Continue with what we're doing, or, or open up all businesses? Are you saying open up all businesses?
I don't know. If you say don't open up that business, no, you're going to get right ready, go beyond your time to go to the barbershop. There may be a fight for that deal, so I, I, but yeah. You can always say, like we did, not younger at that place, but certainly with them, you can only have so many. They've got, they've got the right to say, you come in at three o'clock, do your hair then, whatever, whatever the deal is. There's rules that can be made if people can go back to acting like they're having fun. And I think this is way too far to, we've gone too long telling people what to do now. And they're restless, and they're going to get more restless. There's going to be more right down to hospital for a little over that you don't want. Because it's, it's getting to where, well, when you have a man run to your pickup, like he's going to hook you up, and me getting me another man management course, it's time to get it over with. And that is exactly what's happened. And I've been through that once, then we'll go through again.
Yeah, thank you, Craig.
I personally think we ought to do it a week at a time, see what happens the twenty-seventh, because Abbott's going to come up with something the twenty-seventh. By his own admission, and his own doing thirtieth, he'll have another one where they're ill, depending on what he does. But we got to do something, because, like Sarah said, every one of us in here, with the exception of Dan, Sarah, Roger, gets a check. Every time, every time. Now, with that being said, do I think we need to open it up? Do it all over? No, I don't. But I think a week at a time, slowly, and see where we stand the twenty-seventh with our cases, taxes, whatever, do it all. Do it a week at a time. I don't mind coming in here once a week. You might be getting tired of making agendas once a week, but that's, I mean, there or there.
When you say week at a time, you get the end of this week, and something happened that you don't like. There's no more?
No, we revisit it.
Yeah, I looked at it.
Need to see what we need to do the next time.
So we, we meet again next Tuesday. And if there are changes, we either incorporate those changes, or we continue as we are.
Something in heaven, say you open it up today, which is not, say you open it up today, something happens during the week. Say you open it up today. Something happens during the week that. Somebody in charge don't like. You shut it down? Again? There's gonna be mistakes made in that.
Yeah, there is.
And that's just part of the living.
It is.
Leave it up to a week. Right? If this chorus comes down. From New York, wherever, comes down here. Or where, and the, the. Virus goes up here, we might shut it back down. But if it don't, let's go.
You say what kind?
What?
I mean, say what you said there again. These dang things here got.
The chorus virus comes down. It's. It may be working this way. Out in rural areas. But. If it's not. We can open up a little more. Within another week. If it's comes on down. Just like Abilene, it's hit that food market over there. I mean. Market over and got lots of people. They hope they've stopped it right there. But if it comes on down to here, we get, jump up to. Twenty tomorrow. Would have to do something else.
I'm, I'm sorry, that, that don't make no sense to me. You know, it's here. It may be not be as thick as it is over yonder, but it's here. We've only had people come out there and if they go in for another place, that can happen again. Uh, and I, I commend the fellas for going that straight out there. You know, you can put yelps in this doggone thing. If the dog hadn't stopped to look backwards, it caught the rabbit. And that ain't the way it really went, but that's not part of the deal. We sit here all day long and bring things in. That could happen. But, uh, I'm not telling you just what I'm seeing, what I'm hearing. But it's tired.
Whatever.
It's tired of it, you know, and, and God knows. That, that everybody in this building right here is wanting the best to happen. I don't doubt that one bit. But again. You know. My thoughts is worth nothing. Some of you stop to, is way higher than we want to. But. You know, I guess I just live out and open to them now. I guess, uh, this, this, this can go to br- it can go to hurt your dad's brain mine if you don't want it. And, uh, that can be worse than the. Bird flu or COVID, whatever we call it. Uh, you know, uh. And I'm not, I'm not saying close it down, I mean, open it up. I'm not saying I don't. I'm saying you want to wait, get a week, get this. Everything that you wrote down. I still say if you tell people to stay six foot away. Most that's got a brain cell will do that. Uh, if I can do it, anybody can do it. And I try my hardest to do it. Uh, and, uh, so, uh, let's give. I think let's give the people out here the same. Uh, uh, uh. Two cents or, or, or that we know. And that's something we know and you cannot make. People, you can ask them. And if you do it in the right way to ask them, I think you get more than them. And, uh. It's just. It's time to. To, it's not time to shake hands. Not time riding out of the first car. I know that. Let's, let's keep that kind of a deal going. I don't think people would worry about that. But here's another thing that, that, that needs to be opened. There's some churches. That other than that, do you think you don't want it up there? That's all the people stuck to look at them. And you say, well, we can't just let them go in there. No, we can't. But most of them can have two services. And even three services. And if they want to find the Lord, they'd be at a firm, it'd be there. Uh, whichever service they go to. Uh, so there's ways.
Yeah.
Make everything look a little better.
And the churches has, has been addressed in such a way that, uh, the governor's order overrides anybody else's order. Um, they are allowing services as long as you follow the social distancing guidelines and only so many in there and all of that, so.
They could have two.
Mm-hmm.
And get.
Yeah.
To do, uh, uh, out of the park.
Right.
Some be waiting.
Yeah.
Uh, if they wanna go back now.
Right.
If you're gonna go, you can put one on each end of the deal.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, it's, uh. I just think there are ways to work things out. That it could, kind of, you might not satisfy all of your feelings. Uh, or all of my feelings, or all of, uh, the lady's feelings, or the man's feelings. But I think we can work with people. Uh, if we're just having over nine. And, uh, and, and we're all aim, aiming for the same spot.
Mm-hmm.
That nobody gets hurt.
Right.
I think everybody in here is. And if they're not, they're in the wrong place. Uh, but I feel like it. Uh, that's everybody's.
Did I make a motion that we extend the order with the relaxing of retail that the, the governor has stated? And re-meet in one week?
I second that.
Okay, so basically, uh, we come back again next week. And we follow with the new one with the governor's, uh, orders in there. We add those into ours, um, keeping those that are, uh. Person-to-person contact closed for now, correct? Is that what I'm understanding and everybody else is understanding?
That's correct.
So, we would allow retail to open up. But if it's a business that is person-to-person contact, like your barber shops and your beauty shops and your nail salons. And the ones that are listed in the order, those will continue to stay closed right now. That's, yeah, for one week. Yeah, that's the motion in the second right now. Yeah, I don't know what this stuff is. I haven't seen it in so long. Um, but there was a motion in the second. I just wanna make sure everybody understood what those were.
Yeah, we've got, we've got to forgive. The people of this county. And government is world's worst about thinking the citizens are idiots.
Yeah.
Okay, we gotta give them a little credit to do what's right because to my knowledge, we have two cases here.
Yeah.
Brought in from somewhere else. I think that says a lot for people scared counties. They really do. But we've. If you. We cannot keep it shut completely down for a week and a week. It's current county. So.
I agree, Sullivan.
Yeah.
And just give them a little credit.
Yeah, alright. There, I, I'm gonna go ahead and say it. I'm gonna, I'm gonna say what's gonna happen next week, okay? The possibility is that Snyder will be, uh, one of those communities. It's not a foregone conclusion. It's just a thought. Last week, governor said that they're gonna start testing in rural communities and they're gonna do widespread testing. It looks like that what they will do is they will, uh, have a number that you call in if you've had symptoms. Uh, that's the first thought. The rest of it is, it could be anybody and everybody goes and get tested. We don't know the details on it right now. Um, so, uh, if we are chosen to be one of those communities that does the widespread testing. It'll be the National Guard comes in, they set up, they drive through testing and then within forty-eight hours. We know who's, who's, uh, positive possibly. So, uh, that is my concern as far as, uh, the one week. And as far as opening everything up on a widespread basis. Uh, is that we find out. Do know that, uh, if someone does get tested, they're, they're asked to quarantine. Um, and then they are, they do contact tracing, find out who all they've been in contact with. Uh, like I said, we don't know for, for sure that we're gonna be one of the communities, but. Uh, we received information yesterday about this possibility. So, um, waiting to get more information, I was gonna wait a little bit longer, but I want y'all to know what's coming down the pipe. Possibly. Um, so, the testing would be sometime next week, either right before or right around the time that we would have a meeting. So keep that in mind, uh, when we, uh, as we go forward. I'll let you know for sure in the next day or so, if we're gonna be one of those communities that's gonna be tested. Uh, on, on a widespread basis. So, um. As you know, if, if we, if we, if we do this testing, there could be people that are asymptomatic that feel like, uh. Well, we don't know for sure if they asymptomatic are gonna be tested or not, but if people that have, might have some symptoms and they get tested. Uh, but they're not severe symptoms and they feel like, well, I've just got a little cough. They've been going out and make, they decide that they're gonna go somewhere and they start spreading it to other people. That could be, that could be in concern. So, that's just something I want everybody to be aware of right now, so.
And I understand that, but.
Yeah.
But if it wasn't, if we didn't have, if it ends, it does, this world will be lost.
Oh, I understand that. I know, I know. I'm just making you aware. Just making you aware, so.
Also, though. Uh, until we do know, as you said, if you don't know about that for sure. One thing we do know for sure that we have a motion in the second.
Yep. I know it. I just wanted to put that out there. So, all in favor? Alright. Uh, court to discuss and consider Allison Bass and McGee L O P for assistance with the county transportation infrastructure fund. For twenty twenty county road repair grants. Uh, if you'll look in there in your packet, thank y'all. I appreciate y'all coming in and talking to us. Um, alright, so, we all know Allison Bass and McGee. And, uh, they've done some things for us before this. They're requesting to, uh, assist with the county road repair grant. Or they've sent in a proposal to assist with the county road repair grant. That, uh, Tex, Texas Department of Transportation has. It looks like. Where is it? County is, our county is entitled to an estimated allocation of two million eight hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and two dollars. And we have to provide current available resource revenues a match of five hundred and sixty-four, two hundred and sixty dollars and forty cents. Allison Bass fee is about twenty-five thousand dollars. I think this is an in-kind. If, if it has, I think it has been in the past. I think the in-kind, uh, match. Yeah, yeah. Right, so that five hundred and sixty-four thousand could be in kind instead of cash. So, materials and whatever else we have on hand. I don't remember, we have to, have to, have to have an annual road report. I don't remember if we.
The annual road report is due by the commission to, to, to court in September of every year. And it has to be presented after the present, the court has to be presented to the district, to the.
Ranger.
Yes, the ranger and district court. And so, on the road report, I'm wondering if he's wanting to see the last year in the road report.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
So that he could, um, see what was the need based off of that.
Yeah.
Well, I would think that because if it's September, appears to me they want it right now, so give them that peace.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do ours for this year. That's not a problem.
We'll just pull nineteen's if we have it. We do have nineteen's, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. See, that's one of those habits.
In this particular submission, they're actually asking for grades of each road.
Yeah, they're also asking for, uh, information on the roads that you're wanting to choose or that you would be working on in your, in your, uh, precinct.
That is one thing. I mean, all, all our roads are pretty well the same, so I've only handed in the, the first page, not the second page.
Okay. So I guess the real question is. Do we wanna use Allison Bass and McGee for this? To, uh, handle this grant for us?
This is the second time this has been brought up. It was another company prior to this. And I know that it was mentioned about my office doing it. However, I have one person working remotely from home, my first assistant. And I have, uh, FEMA webinars, state webinars, Washington brief webinars on a daily basis. I have three different, um, conference calls this week that are usually an hour, ten hour and a half long. Plus getting the FEMA documents together. So, I, I just don't, I'm very, stretched very thin in my office right now. I don't see that I'm gonna be able to get it done before May twenty-seventh. I know Allison Bass. And his office has done a lot of stuff for us in the past. I mean, he's part of the. Uh, covers the, what does he do? For county judges and commissioners.
Yeah, he is.
Council or something.
Yeah.
Uh, so I trust that they would do fair work and the price is not. Any different than, you know, what my, on my administrative. The only thing is you wouldn't get an administrative, um. Part for me doing it, which is in kind basically.
Right.
But what I, I am pretty sure that I will be the one actually submitting the reports once it's, it's approved and we get the grant. Then I would, my office would be the one actually working the grant and submitting it. So then I would still take the administrative cost on that.
If I'm not mistaken, when we had that other company, which we didn't know, come forward. It was before all this really kicked off and we knew that you were gonna be slammed with FEMA. Yeah. Right.
I thought, oh yeah, so I'm gonna be, I'm gonna do this.
Yeah.
As every day I have calls and every, and every time I don't have time to do it now.
And eighty percent of their fee would be paid as well.
Yeah.
By the grant.
Yeah.
I tell you, this in-kind stuff is not easy. To do it in kind. We tried it before and they rejected it. We were working on waterways and we listed all the things that we're gonna do for in-kind.
Yeah.
They didn't give us the time of day.
Really?
So it's gonna have to be something that we can actually determine what they believe is in kind.
Sure. Okay.
From the Cavan Road one, the redoing of the Cavan Road and then the China Grove. Um, by us doing it, um, and tracking everything and all that and using the FEMA worksheets for that, the cost. They did allow, um, more of that because I use their federal documentation that they would track for that stuff, so. But I don't know who's the grant person over this grant.
What I'm understanding here, though, is that we cannot do the work.
I, I, I don't know if it's a lot.
That's what it states.
Is it? I haven't read, honestly, I haven't read the whole entire thing because.
What is that?
Well, we don't need to. If it ain't got in kind working, it. I mean, I'd love to have the money, but you're, you're in the position we're in right now financially, or could be. Because if it's an eighty, twenty grant, two and a half million.
Five hundred.
It does say here, and number four, if your county intends to use. It does say here, and number four, if your county intends to use contractors to perform the work, you would be providing transportation. So um the process is, so that leaves that open.
Right, it actually makes the statement. Uh I haven't found it yet.
Yeah, that may do and if you don't.
The grant does permit counties to perform the work into the sales.
Let me see where he goes.
And if uh, here, here's a thought, if Texas is paying eighty percent of the uh twenty-five thousand dollar fee, we're looking at five grand. For two point eight million. Or two point three million.
I think the other one was on that other um proposal that was sent back in February, Carrie.
Okay.
I think that's, I think it was them saying that.
Maybe that was right.
Look at number four on the second page.
Yeah, I think the one that your return to was on that first one because that's personally why I was like, ah, I'll do this, but no.
Right.
That was right up there, that's the, the work.
Yeah, it does.
I guess it was the other one.
You haven't looked at about two thousand documents in the last couple of weeks, have you?
Well, we did the Cavan, but the second time, we didn't pay any, the, the, the.
Um I mean, we, it's paid because we paid for the staff, we paid for the used equipment, but it was still, wasn't extra and over and above. And we were able to track all of that and calculate all of that and then count the use of that towards our in-kind.
Cause I remember that we all used FEMA worksheets and FEMA.
Yes, equipment rates and everything.
That's a pretty good amount of roads you could, you could do from Caliche to. Silco, if that's a possibility to do that, you know, in the grid. Lot enough. There's two point three million.
It doesn't, six point three million, but that'd be eighteen to twenty thousand a mile. It's not very many miles. But since we can do the work ourselves, I say that we're gonna get the grant.
Yeah.
Is that a motion?
Yep.
Using. All in favor of hiring. Uh Allison Bass? All right, unanimous.
They don't come out there, look at it, pull the, pull the coo stack up.
All right, court to consider accepting donations to county entities. We have two donations sheets. One is for. Oh, say that, that, it's all, I'm sorry, we just have the one. I'm thinking of the other. It's only been Monday, two days in a row. And we just have the senior center donations, which is a total of twenty-nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars. All in favor? Very good. All right, let's conduct a public hearing to request successful status of countywide voting. I guess we'll open the public hearing.
Yeah, opened up that.
Ten fifty-eight.
This is, anybody wants to make any comments?
Just us chickens.
Just us chickens.
They weren't good, did they?
I think so, and I had no complaints from anybody as far as, in fact, I had a lot of emails from people um that really enjoyed it. Because they were able to, uh one lady uh was out at, was out at Ira and would have had to come all the way back to town. And was very pleased that she could just run across street at Ira from the school and vote and be done.
Right.
And didn't have to try to get back into town.
Yeah.
No, no, no.
Actually, no. No, everybody was uh, we didn't have any, with us having it at the courthouse that day, plus having all of them for early voting and then that day also. I did not hear, not one complaint.
Yeah, great, maybe they're boss and grocery.
Yeah.
Took a little longer to get results in because of.
Yes.
Some minor stuff, but that's just nature of the beast.
Nature of the beast, some things it takes a little longer because of it, but um I don't know if the new machine that we have or, you know.
Worked that same way.
Worked that faster or not, we'll see.
Okay.
Okay, well, there's no one here and no one speaking, so.
Eleven o'clock?
Eleven o'clock, we're closed then.
Is it eleven o'clock? It is.
No, that's a.
I'm in a Bickerstaff, Heath Delgado accosted L O P to serve as county's bond counsel on a contingency basis. So uh we discussed this a bit not too long ago. This is in, we have to do this to be able to uh use a bond agent. Do we need to call him or?
He knows, he said he's watching the YouTube stream that if there's any questions, um I have his cell phone number, so. But basically, um we just, we need to add a agreement with him. We only, we use Bickerstaff, use the Delgado. Um every time when we update our obligations, Vincent's for going out for refinancing on our two thousand nine, nine or thirteen? Thirteen, two thousand thirteen certificates, then um they have to update this because there's been some minor changes in wording and legislation. So they have to go through the process for hiring, choosing them as our bond counsel.
I was thinking that they were saying twenty thirteen as well, and I didn't know that's what he told us. And here it says the bond is one of duly authorized issue of general obligation refunding bond series twenty twenty, so that needs to be changed.
Um well, that's what the thing's gonna be.
Oh, it's what it's gonna be, okay.
Yeah, because we're refunding it in twenty twenty, but it's a two thousand thirteen series that we originally, well, it was originally a nine and then.
Okay.
Thirteen.
Redone in, parcel redone in two thousand thirteen, the remaining part of the two thousand nine was redone in two thousand seventeen.
Okay.
So this is the two thousand nine series, um the, the first part that was redone in two thousand and thirteen. It's refinancing it to save the, uh as Vince had said when he was here, he was looking at a potential of about two million. Um I received an email from him this morning and uh they have gone out for, they have issued the statement to actually go out for the business.
Nice.
Um, all right, here it is. The preliminary official statement and notices still for the following issue are now available. Which was, but that series was nine million, five million five thousand, the same time Texas general obligation refunding bond series twenty twenty, that's the February twenty twenty.
Four twenty twenty.
Yeah, um and so those are being received until April thirtieth. So they opened that today because we got our global rating back and everything and they were, were looking back as soon as we. Re, refund the obligation for our bond counsel.
And there's some, a document that I need both you, Nelda, and you, uh Melody, to sign. We need to get in front of a notary and we can go downstairs to do that, I think, so.
You have it in your office, right?
I do have it, yes. Yeah, so um it's just one that they put the wrong name on, so. We can do that today.
I would second that with the uh correction of one error in that agreement. It's on the second page, got February one fifty-seven, twenty twenty.
February one fifteen, one fifty-seven, where?
Here it's showing one fifty-seven.
On the stated history?
Make the four though.
I, I think that's when they actually came the very first time and presented.
So this is, I don't have the same agreement, y'all have.
No, it is the same agreement, but I don't know what page it's put.
I'm on the second page of the agreement at the top. Oh, I'm sorry, that's the, that's the actual refunding.
But there still is a, um, an error there, two thousand five seven.
That's what I'm saying.
Gotcha, yeah. All right.
Make the fifth thing.
All right, that can be fixed fairly easily.
Second, anyway.
All in favor? All right, very good. We're gonna talk to, have Jason talk to us a little bit about his Scory County EMS thirty and thirty, thirty and three plan for financially burdened citizens of Scory County. And this came about, Jason, uh because of where we're at right now and people being financially burdened with COVID, not being able to work, but still needing services, correct?
Yeah. So this is uh, you know, I recommend it as a temporary measure. Uh we can end it whenever the court desires to end it. The court controls discounts, funding of, of ambulance bills and I'll report to y'all because of that. And so I, I was asked to come up with uh some sort of help um in that, and so I came up with. The ambulance service uh plan of thirty and three, basically taking non-governmental uh ambulance bills, so. Things that through Medicare, Medicaid, uh railroad, Medicare. Any of the star services, something like that, that can apply, something government funded that can apply.
Right.
So this is your private and self-pay groups that we're talking about. Part of the insurance, commercial insurance and self-pay groups that essentially will take thirty percent off of their bill. Um of what they owe um to the ambulance service and then they make three payments um of that thirty percent. Which then in turn, uh after the third payment, will result in a total balance. Pretty simple, um it could help um some and it may not help others, um but it might help some. And so I'd like to propose this um to y'all in hopes to help some of the patients that we serve.
Cool. How much trouble, Jason, do you have on the private base collection?
If you've seen our uh yearly write-offs, it's significant. We usually lose millions every year because of it, um but um. It, it, we, we do have one collection agency that we do send the ones that uh, we, we try to collect, do our due diligence, collect the best we can. And some of those go to that uh collection agency, but we're, we're trying to do everything that we can to work with our patients. Uh we don't have any interest on those, of course, you can have any interest on medical bills anyway. But uh we don't, we don't, uh, we don't come after you until we've exhausted all our resources. And, and we have a company at our, that we use called C S C, um that we, uh, the court agreed to a long time ago. We still use that same company, so it, it, I don't think it's gonna be a whole lot of trouble. It's gonna be the patient's responsibility to call us and ask us about it. Uh and see if, what we can do, because we have to filter each patient on a case by case basis. I don't have, I don't have enough time to go to each patient, go out outreach to them. But if we provide this opportunity, then the ones that do call and say, hey, we wanna work out a payment plan, or we call our billing service, we're gonna work on some sort of deal, then we can at that point for a short period of time. And that period of time is whatever you can provide, I recommend August through September. Depending on how things go.
You want to offer these folks a payout plan, is that what you're saying?
Basically, yes, sir.
And it'd be uh, it, it'll be on the ones that uh, that you know can't pay.
No, it'll be on the ones that we can accommodate, that, that can, that can call us and ask us to do it.
They can call you and ask you if they could pay that out.
Yes, so we'll take thirty percent off of their bill and pay it out in three payments.
Take thirty cent, uh thirty percent off the top and you'll fix it where they can pay.
In three payments.
In three payments, all right. Now this. Say, well, that's, well, that's still, even though you're doing a good thing. You take some people that are just social security people. And you're gonna take uh, uh this thirty percent and, and. Uh in, say you're gonna give them a, a month in between that, or is it gonna just come the next three months?
In three payments.
In three payments.
Yep.
Okay, so you're taking, that's what I'm saying, you're taking thirty percent, another thirty percent the first month?
No, no, no. Take a total thirty percent, let's say they go a hundred dollars.
Okay.
Take thirty percent off of that. And divide that by three. And then you divide that by three, then you make three payments based on that amount, and then you're done.
Oh, and you're done with it.
With the exception of government funds, yes. We can't, can't control government funds, Bill.
Right. Yeah, most of those are gonna be.
Some folks and some folks, it's still not gonna be enough.
Exactly.
But you're, you're at least trying and that's, that's, that's the best thing you can do, is try.
I have to coordinate with a third-party billing company that we utilize, along with a buy by Medicare rule, that we don't violate those. So we don't, um so we go through legal there and uh this is, this is one of the areas that we can do. The only other discount that we're currently providing and always providing is a thirty percent discount off the top of their bill if they can pay it full. So this is going off the same plan, it's just dividing it into the three payments. So whatever you owe, right now, whatever you owe us.
Can you get to the, like, they can't say it's ninety dollars. And you, you can take that uh or say whatever it is. They take that first off, then you take thirty percent of what's left for the next payment.
No.
Or is it all equal?
All equal.
Okay, okay.
Thirty percent off the top, divided by three, that's the payment.
Which would be about thirty-three percent.
The same, the same payment all the way down.
For three payments.
For three, okay, I understand you now.
And if it doesn't matter, you may be paying on it, um you know, you may have been paying on it for a year.
Yeah.
And this gives somebody, everybody an opportunity to just pay. I can take whatever I owe, divide it by thirty percent, divide that by three, and you're good to go.
Well, you're trying, so that's all you can say.
You, you might actually notice that you collect more money.
Possibility.
Yeah.
Never done it before.
So.
Try it.
Worth a shot.
How long you wanna try it, August?
I would, I would consider August or September as a deadline, yeah, depending on how the next couple of weeks go.
Well, that's why we lead into through August thirty-first and we'll have you tell us that when and.
Well, if you're not gonna get it, you just will put it in there as long as it is, maybe one day you say, come up with money.
That's what I mean, if we do it through August, that'll be long enough for you to know whether you possibly actually do collect more.
Well, it's not so much.
It's time to hell.
It's just time more of that, can, can we provide a little bit of relief? Yes, we can. Here's the area we can provide relief with. And we can report back August thirty, the first uh commissioners' court meeting in September and say, this, this, this worked or it didn't work. We weren't able to provide some relief or we weren't, and we can decide what we wanna do from there, but this is just a. One area that I think as a public service while ambulance service that we can do without issue.
That's good. That's your motion?
Same.
All in favor? Thank you, Jason. Consider certification of additional revenues in the form of insurance claims from TAC.
Hey, this was for, from TAC for the ambulance that was rushed in Lubbock. There was two additional payments made for US and for a total of three thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and ninety-three cents.
Did you make a motion that we certify additional revenue from TAC? Clear.
All in favor? All right, additional revenues from EMS grant.
This is the, from the pharmacy health services grant that uh Jason had applied for in the amount of a hundred and nine thousand one hundred and twenty dollars.
in the amount of a hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars to purchase a new ambulance. So he got the one fixed and he was able to get a new one, I have no cost, so he can, so he can.
I'd like to motion to assert by that for a new one.
Yep, all in favor? All right. All right, line item transfers and budget amendments.
There are four line item transfers, county court has one of seven thousand eighty-five dollars and twenty cents going into part-time out of election to pay for the payroll, uh, pay the payroll for the election workers. District attorney, uh, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars going into investigative expenses out of witness expense. Carmelene Waterworks, um, worth that, two thousand four hundred dollars into operating out of miscellaneous and instrumenters, asset first, asset purchase and education and training he needed to pay for purposes and services. And then EMS, one thousand dollars into other equipment under a thousand dollars out of building grounds and maintenance. It goes across a thousand to replace broker integrated equipment. That's all of the line on transfers. One presentment to me, what have you done?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, it is to place both of the revenues that are just certified for EMS, one into vehicle expense for three thousand eight eighty-seven ninety-three, and that was to re, to repair the ambulance that was wrecked. And then the other is into his capital outlay line for a hundred and nine thousand one twenty to pay for the ambulance that he got the grant for.
Did you make a motion that we approved line transfers and budget amendment?
All in favor? All right, and accounts payable.
Account payable, seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, six twenty-nine, six twenty-seven.
You have your mind, uh, I need to be.
All in favor?
Did I make a motion that we have done?
All in favor? Thank you, everybody, appreciate y'all coming in and taking the time to meet with us.
Uh, no, I think I'm good.
Okay, we're gonna go get them in this morning.
Yeah, let me finish up and I'll get it down there to them, yeah, yeah, I'll let you know. Thank you, Nelda. How you doing? Good, good. I don't get to see anybody anymore. Sarah Jamison and Dan Evans. Uh, Melody will have that in her.
S A R A A, I believe, be for sure.
And then Jamison with an E or an I?
I, J A M I S O N, I believe. But she's gonna verify.
Yes, S A R A A and J A M I S O N.
Okay, um, what is her?
Whatever though. What, what business is hers? Um, auto clinic. Yeah, he owns the. Do I need to sign, I need to sign, I don't, wait a minute.
Thank you all very much.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. Thanks, Terry.
Now they're heading. You're old enough to know.
Hey, if there's gonna be a fight, it has to be a long distance fight, social distancing.
And I'm in the middle, so let me move.
What was the man's name out there? What was the man's name out there that run the shop behind, uh, seven eleven store, is what? That Jamison used to work for.
Uh, Melvin Devonport.
Melvin Devonport, yeah, yep. Now, that's what I said first, he, I thought he.
Thank you, Melody, I will, uh, get that other ready.
Okay, just call me.
And this one, because we have to put that, so.
Okay.
Uh, after we get that date changed.
Okay.
She's, I think she's a, um, I forget how she's, she's kind of, no.
As far as I know, Sarah comes from up north, but, uh.
She may, maybe can't tell about Mary.
Yeah.
She, she's, she's one of their boys. But I know she's kind.